Start, uh, a thirteen.
I will say please.
Eric.
Eric Woodfather, before you to say thank you, Lord. Thank you for the, our many blessings now and in the future. Place your guiding hand upon us and grant us your wisdom to make decisions that are in the best interest of our residents. That are pleasing in your side. Our thoughts and prayers are with our neighbors in Raleigh as they deal with the aftermath of last week's tragedy. Bless us all, Lord, my askedness, in precious and holy name of Jesus, amen.
And if you would, go ahead and say this later. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the mission of justice. This time I will recite the policy and mission statement. The advanced framework for our success through balanced governance, dynamic partnerships, and engaged community. And if you're underwood, if you would recite our solid presentation.
Yes, sir. Policy is a safe, profitable, and vibrant community where the diversity, innovation, and education drive success in the global and head of society.
Great, thank you, sir. All right. Just to the agenda.
Yes, by the way, there's an amendment to the present agenda prior in three months, three quarters, capital, political, for a favorable act way and favor.
And that's the amendment that's on the table, everybody hear that?
Second.
Have a motion and second, discussing about it. All those who favor the signature five by saying aye. Of opposed like sign. Most key. Right. There's you.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right, a motion, a second, a second agenda. All those opposed, I mean, all approved, say aye. All those opposed like sign. Aye, no, no. That's that. All right. Uh, you have any presentations? No, I didn't have any, yeah. All right. That's it, we got a pretty full evening here, so go straight into the public hearings. And then we'll do public hearing five. First.
Mayor, if you'd just open the public hearing.
Oh, yeah, I have to do that, don't you? Now, open the public hearing. Five four more. Five four more. All right. Patrick Lineberry.
Hi.
If you would, give her a paper name and address, please.
Patrick Lineberry, four hundred and dollars each, in the central Carolina. You're on behalf of the unders of this site that we propose in annex. It's not how it's now setting. It's tied to the mega site that will speed and operate. The annexation is critical to its development, and if you have, have any questions, question.
I got any questions? No. So if I understand this correctly, this is just an annex of property, a site property in, within the family limits. And, uh, I, I might have seen it, but thing is, if it gets approved, uh, will that take effect?
It will take effect when it's reported.
Okay, and then we provide fire, water, or all that stuff to us.
Right.
Any questions from the board? Yeah, I read loads of people here. But here, what's the reason in the board?
Make a motion to approve the annexation ordinance number twenty-two, pending that one. In the corporate realm of the Silo City, North Carolina.
Second. Have a motion, have a second. Any further discussion, any questions involved there? I will go directly to the vote, all those who favor the shaking pile saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed like sign. Okay. Your next thing. Send the chat. So we'll open, I have the public hearing. What was it, five points, and we'll see, just give it a sound of us. Wolfbeast is here, we're open here. All right. First, person that signed up, Chris McCain.
Yes, sir.
If you would, step up here and give your name and address, please, sir.
Sure, my name is Chris McCain, I'm nineteen forty-five old, fire away. Prepared a couple, uh, little slides just to go real quickly. I think it's like five slides, little, real quick on the most few days, and stuff, and then our company. We started about, uh, go forward, you say it's all. Um, we started about thirty-five years ago, I worked on university as a group of PhD students, going for their, or PhD students. In the material science, uh, area of study, and they had a project for silicon carbide. Um, and decided that was a good substrate for chips and melodies and things of that nature, it's got really good. Um, uh, heat handling capabilities better than silicon chips. So when you look at the entails of the world, they have like a silicon chip, you have silicon carbide. Um, what silicon carbide allows us to do is to do more with less. So we can transfer power faster because we have less power loss. Uh, we can make smaller devices, smaller batteries. Um, so if market is a really big market for us, the big market laws, right, has been passed in Florida as well. Um, if we might please set up going forward here. Um, we're a big, we're a good sized company, and we're growing fast. Um, you can see we have about thirty-five billion dollars in current projects that were in the pipeline, so what that means is. Um, say a Ford or a Toyota or somebody that, that nature is going to design a new car or a new engine or an electric motor. They work with us, they've designed and build devices for them, and then we're part of their design, right? So, so we get in on these awards at the very earliest onset of the project. Um, in the past three years, we've gotten another eleven billion, so we're here. Our sales team is doing a really, really good job and making all of us in the construction world. So it's been a lot, it's been a lot of time. We're about forty-five hundred employees, uh, we are a worldwide company, we have offices throughout the Pacific Rim, in Germany, and throughout the United States. For that. So, uh, we're really into the electrification of everything, so while cars are the big business force these days, you have the ability to really affect anything that has a motor. So heavy equipment, you bring it to electric, electrification, um, agricultural equipment, robots, and then there's vertical takeoff and landing devices, pick and help them out of Vermont. But we actually have an electric, uh, climbing. So it looks like. So, uh, this is kind of a, well, this is kind of a very condensed version of all of our different. Business lines, right, so, so from product design, that's obviously our R and D, uh, department, uh, to the silicon carbide crystal, all the way through a packaging test. So the device processing is what you see on the fabs, you ever hear something called a fab or fabrication facility? So we just recently completed one of those in, uh, in Central York. Um, this project is really the second to, um, the second to symbols there, it's our materials business. So we will go from the, um, creation of a crystal, to the forming of a wafer, to that last step where it's called a heavy taxi. With a layer of material we put on that wafer before we sell it either to ourselves for our own uses or to some of our customers. Well, so while it's running, the back end is the, is the fabrication line, uh, this will be a material stack. Next slide. Currently, that's our factory in Durham, um, it's the largest silicon carbide factory in the world, um, right now, uh, we're the next slide. And that's what we're building, so, um, if you can imagine the, the, the left and right aspect of that project is our first phase, and then the, the. We'll say up and down section, the second phase. That factory I just showed you, um, if you look at that first black, uh, box right there on the, on the phase one, those were actually, uh, representing solar panels that'll be on the roof. That factory I just showed you fits within that first little section of that building. So, um, for the next slide. What we're building is something that is ten times bigger than we currently have, so we already have the largest factory in the, and we're going to build another factory that's ten times larger. Kind of securing our place in that market. I think some of the, um, information in the agenda talks about the four hundred and forty-five acres, I don't believe the annexation section, I was just talking about that. There's a highly automated factories, a lot of robots, a lot of good technical jobs, uh, that we're partnering with NCA and C to help develop, um, uh, engineers to serve that. And then also with so, several different community colleges, they're really core areas where our technical jobs as well. Um, of that eighteen hundred that we're, uh, planning on to add, so it might twenty-three. Um. And that's, I think that's it, the next slide. Well, that's what we're building, and that's, uh, what we're looking to figure. I definitely, the entire Silo City, we've met, uh, we've met a lot of the emergency personnel already, there's some little activities we're gonna have coming up on the site. And, and everything, it's just been fantastic, we're, we're really happy to be there, we really love coming to communities. And giving the impact, a great impact on those communities, and, and being, uh, being, becoming part of the people. So we're really thankful for the warm welcome you received.
Yes, sir. You may know, you may be aware of it, some of it, I'm gonna ask you for a moment.
Okay. Okay.
Uh. I'm, I'm pretty sure that Wolfbeast has been in contact with our community college system and that. To help us in the region supply the level of expertise in the workers that you're looking for, that I would think. And can you, can you give us any detail or any, any information about that?
Yeah, so, uh, I, I don't have a lot, I know that our HR department and our manufacturing team have been going from school to school throughout the area. Um, I know that they've talked to the Town County Community College, I know we've talked to the Lee County Community College. Yeah, I mean, there's one there, she actually did something, me and I got them back, and Lisa Chapman, that's who. Yeah, they decently shot me directly. Um, and then there's been several other schools that they've talked to, and I think, whatever, whatever to take a guess, I would say there's probably a dozen schools they've already met with. In the surrounding area to try to forge those issues, because. I thought I heard about actually a high school as well, too, to try to create some sort of technical program, um, which is. Yeah, so, um, we as an organization support STEM, uh, as well, so every year at our, our campus in Durham, we have a STEM day. And they'll bring, you know, several hundred, you know, elementary through middle school, up until high school, each students will come, partake in lots of different activities. Do the same thing in our Long Island, New York facility, I'm sure it's, it's kind of bred into it, it's gotta build the future of our company.
Right. All right, next speaker is Mr. Greg Wood. Give your name and address, sir.
Yes. Greg Wood, ten fifty-three, pine forest drop south, west Silo City, like, oh. Um, I didn't realize I was going to do behind you, I almost want. Be ahead of you, but, uh, I'm here on behalf of the Chatham, uh, Chatham County, uh, EDC, and we want to welcome Wolfspeed, Chatham County, and. And the, uh, excitement there is in the community for all that's coming forward, and certainly the job that everybody has done so far. Um, you know, Chatham, I mean, Benfast and Wolfspeed, uh, come into Chatham County, these companies are both like definite industries of the future. Chatham residents can take pride in knowing that we're producing the technology that will be used in clean energy and the future, and future technology. Infest and Wolfspeed are big news, but hopefully we're not done yet, at least that's according to Michael Smith, our president there at EDC. Um, Wolfspeed's only taken a portion of the site here in Silo City, I think he said four hundred and forty-five acres or so. But obviously, we're actively trying to market additional, uh, the additional property to additional companies. Uh, suppliers have been fast, we're joining a automaker on their side, and there's additional land adjacent already being filled by other companies such as FedEx, uh, as a distribution center. We're grateful to have such strong partners in our work. Our local leadership is engaged and thoughtful and thorough planning to manage this exciting new growth. Mon cure that, um. Is creating a small, uh, area business plan that will act as a guide for development around the Benfast side and here in Silo City. Down, four is engaged in consulting for them to manage and expect growth, uh, manage expected growth that will follow Wolfspeed. On behalf of the, uh, Chatham County EDC, I would like to thank the mayor, town commissioners, the town staff, or the child support and support. Of this growing in our community.
The question for Mr. Wood. All right. That, uh, that's the last for our speaker on that topic. We have that. Close the public hearing, that one. Next.
Oh, yeah. So I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the incentive agreement between that town and Silo City.
A motion and second. Any further discussion or question? All those who favor say aye.
Right.
All those who opposed like sign. No, here. All right, next on the list. We have public hearing for the CD, CDBG, knowledge development program. Open that, uh, public hearing now. And I don't have anybody signed up to speak, uh. If I got any information.
So, CDG brand supply to work involving the five hundred thousand dollar annual course bank. For the water, uh, for Wolfspeed and next one side. And with assistance along with our totally fund, uh, the definition that comes around the fellow's feet side.
If I got any questions to the, about that?
Twenty-five percent match also, covered by Golden, so there is no local match. All of them to come out in our mode.
Great. Not with those public hearing for that, is the one that signed up to speak. Right, what's the reason in the board?
I make a motion to approve the resolutions proceeding with application for three elements, like, we are putting on development, and first. Project at Chatham Silo City, yes, we affection.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion, questions? Not all those who favor the signature five by saying aye. All those opposed like sign. And let me hear. All right. Next up. Uh, we have a little panel, UDO, the retention and protection of large trees. Open that public hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah, two folks will speak, uh, first one up is Jack Meadows.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. We will see the packet on page thirty-eight, uh, there's a little page that's regarding the time. It's a UDO amendments to our own warrants, section three oh seven, retention and protection of large trees, mentioned, all portions. Uh, this amendment first step from staff and, uh, four members of the Silo City, for the top project they're working on. And, uh, after having that discussion, I said, let's take the plan board and have a further discussion, and we hold a plan board initiated, you know, from September. Um, the, uh, plan board recommended by unanimous votes to approve the ordinance demanding, uh, your, uh, that center package. And I'll, I'll get that to say it, and the, the action is consistent with the adopted naming letter plan, there is three reasons why I'm taking this, uh, thirty-eight. They're, they're part of it. Again, the detail staff did provide some information here, you don't have to get through, uh, unless you have questions. But, uh, I just want to get straight to the memo, or the amendment itself. You go to page forty-six of your packet, it's a, a simple, uh, one loaded item, number fourteen, uh, the relevant section, it says, remove old trees on an existing golf course properly. For maintenance purposes, that prevent healthy grass coverage broke on tee boxes, fairways, ground, and greens. Reaching optimal level of survival or survival, and or damaged cart paths, cracked rays, the tree roots. So, point of this is that there is, uh, natural things that are causing the golf course not to perform to its optimal level, which would be, uh, messed up golf carts, uh, paths. Or the greens aren't getting enough sunlight, the trees can be removed, the roots can be removed to, uh, different golf courses. Uh, last thing, this was a note that came from the planning board, uh, a type D window paint screen shall be maintained if the existing adjoining land use. In the family residential, so, uh, golf courses separate property from the residential properties at the point. And so if there wasn't a be existing spring between the golf course and the house, that should be maintained with the plan board following. And, um. Even if the tree, we're, you know, criteria, there should have been some kind of landscape, separate the golf course from the residence. As was, not adding new, you couldn't remove the spring and not have, that would be an addition to, um. The resident to use, Tom. Um, the club, folks, that, what we had, the problem that, they did provide a, um, example on page forty-four, it shows one area in general, or this might be case where they. Hard tree in their house. That's one, page forty-four of the packet. It's April here, it was totally wrong, that's right, right, you, we can.
But that's, that's why I wanted to call out, and I don't know if I need to recuse myself from this, because I am a member of the country club, um, I'm not on the board, but I, you know, I'm a bondholder in a voting rights.
In my opinion, that's lost, still.
That's why I just want to, I just want to make sure that the record reflects that.
So Mayor, I'll finish my presentation by saying that the limits in the, on page forty-five through forty-eight is what you're voting on, that's the, uh, ordinance, and then the, uh, ordinance. Half recommend use worksheet on page forty-nine, it's called approved. That would be the recommended work that I have provided, go to worksheet, then, that's right. Um. But, um, that's, that's all I've got, Mayor, if I had any questions about the others, for, we already noted, but here, I think you've got time, yes. Yeah, I've answered the questions that I've done.
About the green thing, there's only one where that was coming to play.
Where maybe the other place you were playing, that was just one of them, the five of the map.
Okay. Right, exactly.
Yes, I have a few questions.
So besides the trees, is there anything else that falls in the category of the type B similar paint screen?
Uh, these bring the B, uh, type of. Yeah, I think so too. Question. That's your examples of hybrid spring, dancing with trees, pretty rubbery. Basically, what we tell a lot of folks is, uh, small trees, a fifty-foot center with shrubs, I believe fifteen. They have to have some type of foliage there, some trees, pretty much likely all, and, and optional offense, course rubbery. Where is that? You have trees. And. Uh, it's enough. What the, uh, board of presidents have talked about, and saying, um. Thing thing. Prepare. Necessarily. What happens if, um, tree, like in your example, page two. Trees no dies. Has to be replaced. Or, or the maintenance, right, main thing. For existence. Put aside to remove some trees. If you got the, the back, or, or at least, make sort of a pipe thing. So right, if this next to a single.
They could have removed a tree and not have to replace it.
No, no, I'm just talking about part six. Where it's a single family residence, so under that exception, if there's a single family residency, it, it, it's joining the, the, um, golf course. They have to keep, that's how we, to maintain that, to keep the existing type B, similar paint screen. To maintain it. Um. One option would be, I think this would be off route, and, and. Uh, there is a tree to be removed by the country club, and what's left would be a, would need a type D spring, and no new additional plant would be required. But if the tree is removed, and IP is not in there, then the country club would install it by the. That would cover it in. Putting it, putting it back to qualified and type B similar paint for that resident. Only question.
Other question. Next. Next, we have Greg Wood. Come back up here and say your name and address.
Greg Wood, ten fifty-three, Town College, South. I'm the town chairman, this.
Greg Wood. Yes. Not, the first over here. Yep, what's the reason in the board?
Make a motion to approve the ordinance, and it actually is consistent with the gospel, and development plan, and development plan that is new. Many ordinance is, uh, the, how that you did this, particularly for the ride, not very clever, by system ordinance. And, I mean, uh, many ordinance is, uh, just changes in physical, social, or environmental circumstances that may be existing in regulation, unnecessary, outdated, or obsolete.
Those are the reasonable calls, part five of development order to come on you. Just to offer the second motion. I don't have a motion to say, quick, good. All, vote, all of the favors say aye, all of those like sign. Alright, next, we will move on. Oh, what is, I thought.
Uh, I'm, I'm.
Alright, uh, I feel like if the reason, eleven point eight three acres, might have done every, uh, that will ever show the case. Now, first up, Mr. Jack Meadows.
Thank you, Mayor. This time I'm going to take sixty-two, I see the packet, have to provide a memo and a commission. Uh, the address was in the paper, and it was sent to the joint property owners, and you also go to sign up the property. It is Henry's Day, same office, about eleven point eight three acres, a lot industrial, coming, heavy industrial conditional, uh, zone. Proposed use of the main traction processing, creating a good equipment. And previously, more detail about that, the concrete plant with back solid, aggregate beams, conveyor, modular control, center, truck man, garage shop, truck washing facility, capital storage, various gravel, sand, and for other, uh, company material. Such property located along the northern border, found to the west of that, three, US six four. Okay, the seeds for the railroad track, local railroad, and, and rest of Port Chatham Avenue, which is down there. I've read, also a lot of language. The property is identified as part of a one five five six two, eight zero seven nine, that double number eleven point eight three. Property is owned by Rean Family Estate, surrounded by tracks with an average area of two point four acres. Um, I'm not going to go through the whole list in the patch, I will try to get to that as we're walking through. Uh, bear with me, the land development plan recommends mixed-use subject property. Uh, there are a lot of, excuse me, there are a lot of objective strategies listed under the mixed-use category in our land development. That has listed all of those on page fifty-three, and it continue objecting pool. I won't read the, the one that individualist full of lines, but, um, those are the list of objective strategies for the mixed-use category. Uh, nothing in the infrastructure, uh, you have the screenshot that you'll see, it shows water store, uh, and, and the percentage of the property. Metal street is maintained by U T, five length, seventy-four five, average daily trips in twenty twenty was about eleven thousand, this general area. Uh, impact on landowners, neighbors, and Chinese community, um, for should deal with two going district here, heavy industrial, light industrial. Uh, their status primarily to some of the improvisation, industrial processing, creating, uh, repairing, renovating, um, playing the same as the commercial, so. Pretty much already said that about industrial, um, one thing it does say is the point standard set forth, uh, place limitations on the characters of the district. We'll get there in a second, uh, and that means they have noise, odor, and so forth. But the last thing I'll point out is the limitations in the light industrial district are more restrictive than other in any. Uh, that's, that's the definition of industrial district for our union. Uh, the dimensional standards, they're very similar, the differences would be building setbacks from the street side or lot boundary setbacks are twenty-five and twenty, and high concentration obviously in potential, which is pretty significant to be, um, and minus or higher. Uh, activities that we discussed and you found in the department site plan, uh, number three, at the bottom of page fifty-four, fifty-five. Looking at about one, uh, self-person and five other employees, that's employment and application, five company trucks apart on site. The maximum trip capacity would be equal to about fifty-five, uh, trip per day of trucks and cars. Uh, trucks, large, uh, concrete mixture trucks, weighing point sixty-three thousand and seventy-six thousand pounds. Um, the loading bay, Port Chatham Avenue, eight thousand pounds, so this, larger than, uh, the largest concrete truck. Um, and it says that trucks may use Port Chatham Avenue bridge five percent of the time. That would only be following the project that's proposed to people, we don't do another one to kill. That, when there's a meeting, um, it says in Chatham Avenue, and decide, might be, uh, different route. Uh, the next thing I put in here is that we talked about with the owners or the developer, truck driver will be instructed to use the U turnbowl on the red street, following the proposed leave money, so there will be ways to turn on, or you go on, you turnbowl. There's, um, the only rent we find will be, and then, uh, and they, we work five percent. Um, getting water, thinking about using eighteen thousand gallons of water per day, uh, sewer at this time is over five of the second system, close of our water point situation. And their sewer flow is about two hundred eighty-four gallons per day, and saw a window for our housing. Uh, there will be dumps on site, will be located behind, okay, uh, screens, on the parking lot will be gravel, text will be, uh, private, access onto a, a public road, not eleven street, or there's never, never be, later, will be on a paved surface, like concrete or paved, uh, driveway turnout. Uh, something called paper. Um, N C D O T will probably have additional comments about the roadway, uh, improvements, driveways, drainage, utility units. And those comments will be handled during the N C D O T driver permit process. And, uh, last two things that I hear is this, this, discussion in the planning meeting, the loudest part of the operation is rocks being dropped onto the bells and trucks. But you want to know what the loudest part of that operation sounds like, or would be, that was identified by the developer. The concrete plant should be, should not be visiting for West Lake Street, again, accompanied by the, uh, app. Relationship of usage, current use of vacant, uh, it's surrounded by single-family residential, motor vehicle sales, cemetery, and multifamily residential. You have a, outside railroad tracks. It's surrounded by R ten, R six C, and light industrial zone. Right, uh, planning board recommendation, uh, planning board voted sixty-one, to approve the ordinance. Including conditions that were consented by the applicant, and that the action was consistent for the land development plan. And they provided reasons why it aren't consistent under that, and that's on page fifty-five. Um, I want to put, put through real quickly and provide actually special point. I have provided, uh, some additional information that I will point out, one, the land use classification sheet that's, uh, for the land development plan. We didn't have any of this, finds the term industrial and mixed. Um, those are both as a part of the topic, I want to make sure that these things, uh, what the definition of both of those are, so that's one sheet from the land development plan. And they're actually the first two definitions of industrial mixed. The other thing I follow, the important to do, uh, we can put it on the screen, we need to make copies of the, uh, pipe brand, but of all it. There's eleven by seventeen version, and we can, we can go there for me too. And also, this week, about the latest, the D O T, layout of the sixty-four five, uh, this is the most current version. It's actually more currently what we have in the packet, on a couple of sheets. But it's showing all the bug turnaround and other things, it's not their final drawing, but it is the latest design, this is. I've had one that I had before, and usual, so that's good to have. Um. Looking through our packet, uh, really quick, you got a zoning map that staff provides, uh, on page sixty-three, uh, and aerial photo on sixty, uh, four, which, have a lot here, what the land brought, shooting them off, the aerial photos on there. Page sixty-five is land, uh, land plan, that shows you the category and what they are. And as I stated, now, remember the page sixty-six, that is one of the two layout, that the world line across the property, number name, a world line town, and then sure, they get parts around the site. And, look at all three, uh, another point.
On these maps, I see fifteen five six two, where is, you know, seven nine one.
What has our time to go? Small parcel, you see one thousand five six ten, go to this, south east corner, it's little, it's like a little alley, near that street. I don't even, so it's small, but nobody in here.
They own their eleven street.
They've not, I think, that's where, that's where the car stop by is, and the one just above it's, uh, that, that's no, uh, initial part. They're clear.
No one matter.
It is that below. But that's the small parcel as a part of the packet, um, it would be number eight oh seven nine one, and that belongs to the Rean family.
Oh, really?
And that would just two separate parties.
What's that other, what's that guy? That's huge color.
And it's almost somebody is. Alright. Uh, another piece of information, uh, related to the land development plan that staff on the line was on page seventy, these are the industrial objective and training. Uh, banner that are in our land development. You know, I put in, each, uh, that, that, this, but, uh, of course, with open duration. On page seventy-one, doors is far up there, applicable need, we talked about, we have a little standard, that was, this is what it is on, uh, page, uh, seventy-one. Limits the decimal levels of a project that joins certain types of, only, obviously, this property, you know, definitely for as a higher, more restrictive decimal thing. Um, page seventy-two and seventy-three are something that you need to keep to work on, that we've been promoting as a visiting project. It is a, uh, called recommended light levels, certain building types. And so the point is make sure that building and reconstruction and commercial, especially multifamily where we got service, they're lit, well enough to, we'll save you first. So, um, some good guidance that we recommend, good point. And lastly, I think I'm going to end here on, on my stuff, is, uh, two things, the conditions that the plan will recommend are on page seventy-four to seventy-five. And they were signed on by him, a private plan will be, after the planning board meeting, there were a couple things that I changed and added. Uh, that were mentioned during the hearing, it's on page seventy-six and seventy-seven, if the board wanted to approve this, I would recommend to consider, what's on sixty, seventy-six. Seventy-six, seventy. What is this? Now, I'll explain that, Henry is not signing it, so we're back to get into three sort of later, uh, letter F, on page seventy-six. There's one thing that's all the products during the planning board meeting, and it is a minimum thirty-foot bucket yard will be installed along the lot boundary lines, or in adjoining residential uses. That's something that was, uh, created by the act, so we added that to the, that was a really good condition. Another thing that I changed, Richard, I failed out on, I'll read through this again, it was more clarification, if it looked at better D. I just spelt out about phasing, the second concrete plant, possible future expansion of batching silo conveyor and aggregate bin. Just so you would know, that's what would be in that second phase, would be another, um, solid conveyor, that I had, it showed on the site horn as proposed. And I just labeled it, so we'd be here, we would know what a second concrete plant, uh, included. We went, um, solid conveyor. And the thought was that probably in a ten-year timeframe, uh, and it was the, could be a ten-year time, time, time frame, before that second. I think it covers the changes they were made. Uh, city ordinance, you're not supposed to do anything before seven AM, correct? Okay. Hi, safety point. Yeah, on page seventy-one. Uh, twenty seventeen and seventeen, they can't go over forty-five, best one. And twenty seventeen and seventeen, they're limited business. They get cranked up by five decimals, or forget past seventeen, I guess the correct way to interpret it. Fish underwood, number eight, this is about the operation, today.
Where was that?
Make, make it operate, so they can, they can operate, but the decimal level would have to be below forty-five. To seventeen, and they could go, get, where I mean.
Yeah. It's not doing, uh, that's a, you know. They can operate at six AM.
We gotta keep it below forty-five decimals. A lot of things been put in rock on, there, that, that exhaust and call a lot of dirt, 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 cloud of snow. And, and the O P also plan on putting the beam in, that's, that's, it'll be difficult for them to, they want to get left down there, so. Down first and turn around, go ahead. And, and talking about that traffic, that's, that's a good segue, you'll find that, I'll show you with the bull front ground, because that, that had all to do with traffic. So, if you, uh, um, if this concrete plant is printed this field, I'm, uh, I'm going to front, not just, not loads, I want to, actually, I want to, say it, I'm going to turn out, hit toward Ashburn. Um, they got sort of turnaround, it's on the first page, it's just past Craigine and near the Pentecostal Owens, um, park. That's where you're going to turn around, you can turn around there, and then you'll head back east for this. Okay, now, if you're going, going to go, um, to the plant, you're coming from Ashburn, you go all the way down, one, pull it to the back of your ramp, you're going to make a turnaround at Solid City Lodge at the intersection of different avenue, that's your next world turn, you're going to make a turnaround later, and come back to the site, and turn right in. Sorry, that's sort of that flow of traffic, with these turnarounds, they're, they're distance away from the driveway, that's, uh, that's a part of the way, you need to leave the site and go down, pull it, take across the turn, and actually go all the way to the mark. I'll just speak on that side.
The, the, well. The last one, it's not, not, it's not, the D O T, how would it control traffic coming up there, like that spoon? And, hold on, don't, what is, don't care, what is, it was a movement, it's a lot of traffic, it's bad traffic, I'm going out there morning, bad traffic around there, coming out of pitch four. That would tell, we're dead, we got to the ground.
What are you calling that, concrete plants, impact, turnaround, or you call us, you're, you're protecting, traffic, how would you control it? Probably turn around, when that's slower than right now. Seems like a question that, yeah, I'm, spoke with this project, I don't know if I can speak eloquently about traffic flow, bigger project.
I know, I say it in the morning, want to come out, you need, and I see, that's changing the road anymore. Can't, can't get out of the road either.
That's a probably something you probably need to, I think. That's what you're saying, right?
Right.
So, if you're talking about having the, the, the light bulb, which both turns, so that would, so the traffic flow, I'm not correct.
It was one of them.
And, um, so I think that would help with the traffic flow and backup, because it would be similar to what they have down at C four. Kind of.
Right.
Um, I think my concern would be the closeness to some of the residents. And I know that, um, looking at where it's been real, that there are houses behind that are not going to be as affected at this particular point. But when you look at the houses that's on the side where the buffer is supposed to be, how is that going to affect that house? Because it's so close.
But in our ordinance, um, actually, we have four of the, that will be, feeling setback, it will, think, the, based on what I'm looking at, they will need to do a setback, promise, more than, they need that requirement. Nor is required of some things, so it doesn't matter how far the plant is. Nor is requiring some things, so it doesn't matter how far the plant is, it's still where the law should involve. At the neighbor's property line, the decimal level, Marie Morgan, they've got to be at a below the. So the decimal level of a hundred on that plant, when it gets to the neighbor of property line, it should be. Getting your forty five load based on the term. Uh so those are two protections. Uh the the there's a requiring ordinance of ten foot legislative buffer. Uh we talked about pipe, bring them all together, uh this will be a pipe A. Our areas pipe buffer, that puts a visual screen, there may be some noise control in that. But the visibility should be high, and what the app plan is proposed is you're beyond a tenth of to be thirty foot vision. Um also visually. They're proposing a eight foot sided um fence. Uh in addition to that. Other requirements. Take a knee, that works, there's some more things, those are welcome condition, if you come up with. There kind of opposite African grades and and that's a rapid walk, so you could add some more conditions, those are the only ones I know, they said I worked today, the staff was able to. Um. Providing.
One about the second page, spare quid.
Yeah.
Clothes.
Um let's go to the um. Let's say. Two. Eight. On your your um. I can't off there, because of course all we look at. And um. You just keep your security, you want to live a fine, you just show their problem based on the. But if you come onto the site, the first uh there you see there's going to be a um. Back officer mobile unit, and right behind it is the conveyor, post batching silo and aggregate bin. And then right behind it, no. For the second plant, they're actually potentially connected. They're they're not, they're not too far apart, in other words, they kind of interchange between one room, so they're within the same vicinity.
That that wouldn't change the.
No, because they're still in that uh same uh route area, they're not going beyond the perimeter that we're looking at. So uh I I think Ms. Boone's question would be is, was the second plant gonna be outside the perimeter, it's not, it's gonna stay in this original perimeter, if it's another set of um. The insolent. Which plays well.
Jackson's advertising this, have you heard from any? Uh residents with their. Rail is pointing.
We need to email from um one of the one property owners.
It's laid out on your packet, it looks like this, Commissioner Whiteley.
Oh, it's.
It's an addition to the packet.
Yep, and um.
It's not you.
Yes.
Did you receive the letter from from the staff? And uh, Stephanie, you know, has a question, and we provided information about the hearing rules and. Uh the final recommendation, a few things, you back and forth email, I guess, is that what we're looking at, Jennifer?
Yes.
So I want to ask.
Um, well, I'm just curious about the reaction of the residences and any information you give me about that, how the planning board has emailed you, who's called you. Any information you give me about the residents?
That's pretty much it.
Right, right.
And I can read that out if you'd like me to, or you got it for me.
Um, so, you know, when the D O T came, I was wanting to put these things, the medians or whatever, I didn't know, I was a big fan of. I am still not a big fan of. I think it's gonna cause a lot of problems, especially if we have. People coming in and out. Trying to do work, going to the mega side, on their job. Of course, I don't think we have any control of that. But they're already decided they're gonna do that. Now, I wasn't a fan of that, but I guess my question is. If they're coming out with the trucks. And they have to turn right, because you can't turn left, right?
Also, initially, probably just gonna look like what you see on page. In two of the. I mean, normal driveway, you can run on a road. When this happens with the uh media project, which, when that's gonna start, we don't know when it's gonna finish. Just give you some dates, but thinking somewhere between. Twenty twenty four and twenty twenty nine, it's it's gonna be a long project, when this even starts, they take forty five years to deal.
Uh but we still have to think down the road what's gonna happen.
I just wanted to get a little more step past that, so what they had worked out with the developer, if this is approved. Uh then we get a driver permit for the total location thing, and then when that project's being developed. The developer and D O T to get together on this new driveways. Come on, and then. I think that's where we want to do that.
I'm not concerned about it that way, I'm concerned about if they have to click right, and then let's say they need to go to the left. And then we've got this median here, right? So they have to go this way, is that right?
If they want to go.
Back the.
You need one of these. You're gonna go down to the penthouse first and do a turnaround.
Okay, all right, here's my question. What's the length of the turnaround lane and the length of the truck?
So. If you have some question.
Because because my question is, is it gonna stop traffic because D O T has put this here and 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 got this issue for these people trying to turn? Is it gonna cause an issue for them to turn? Is it gonna cause an issue, somebody speeding down there and hit the truck and? You you see what I'm saying? I mean, what's the length of a concrete truck from the beginning to the end, the length of the turn line? Because if we don't have any control of what the D O Ts do, then then the people that drive the truck has no control of the people behind them, see what I'm saying? And they might be held responsible for something they should not be held responsible.
That, and and frankly, if I'm wrong, this turn thing that D O T is on design, it has to be designed to handle a fifty two foot truck. All right, yeah, that's that's where I'm. Yeah, that's that's the maximum length that you can you can pull.
That's what, that's my question.
Yeah, that's the maximum length of a over the road long haul truck can be fifty two feet. Concrete truck, uh you in the concrete, if what is forty feet, you need forty feet. Yeah, because a concrete truck is a lot shorter than that, it's heavy, but it's not it's not as long, so it should fit into those parameters. It'll handle a fifty two foot vehicle, it should handle.
I just wanted to have that question because I didn't want something to happen and they and and like, you know, they be responsible for no reason because this is happening. You know what I'm saying, is that makes.
I can give that table link for it, we send these drawings, um there are several hundred feet, these paper, I'm not sure, they had to be protruding, going as long as products. And. Trapping the back of.
Right, right, but we know how the traffic would do our move. Think we're nerdy and they might.
They're they're feeling a lot.
There's a child, it's not a child, it's somebody else's.
If I may ask a question, a segue on what uh Mr. Ray said, and. Okay, this covers it wants me, the uh super street may. But from now till the super street, may we have it, or. Let's say uh plant's there. But coming out and needs to go east on sixty four west eleven. Now. Uh how how will that be accomplished? Because now you have to go across two lanes of traffic, median and entering to the third lane. And if you're trying to do that, between the hours of uh seven thirty. And say, well, after eight or in the afternoon, four to five thirty. That could be, that's a whole different thing, so what's what's the plan for there?
So two two things, one, there will be a um. It's in a conditioning. A one hundred foot westbound light turn lane with fifty foot paper, and the new driveway will be constructed on west side, so if you're westbound, it'll be a right turn lane when this right problem. You're leaving the drive and wanting to make a left, as Mayor has mentioned, you're just, you're crossing every language. That's the only thing I say, the only difference, the only fact that adds to that is in the uh other activity note we got from D O T, this is coming from D O T. D O T will probably have additional comments on the roadway approved, driveways, rain, utility vehicles. And those comments will be handled at this driver point, so there's a hint of some more permitting for this driveway that we hand and process. Unknown. When we did that. Their um. The reaction, where they are being asked for tonight is to do a result. Initial going for project and. And 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 we want to make sure you're aware of D O T things that you do over time. They can make a difference. There are. Thanks.
Well, Jack, I'm gonna read number page seventy one, you know. What what if any penalty is there for violation? Just about.
Um um any violation, the radio is um um violation, we can send a notice of violation. After we determine if they're involved, all right, and then if given time, and that's a correction, after ten days of work, we're gonna investigate. If the violation continues after this. Be a hundred dollars a day, so.
Pay you determined violation.
You know. You have to buy some insurance and patient before we don't have a best. You have to get all of those standards on section one sixty two.
So what if um?
We've never done that before, so.
So let's. I should say that argument, say, this does, this letter has a lot. Joining it, he the decimal leader vital property line, records the findings and comes in and says, Jack, you saw like this.
Uh at least the best of the time. I mean, that will be the correct point in support of operational procedure. It's habits for normal work, uh it may not even actually have a decimal meeting itself, that we gotta give him a good reason to. Uh complain that he felt that he was scared and he was. Because we're going to, he just filed a complaint.
Mr. Boone. You have a question? Paul.
Is there any talk about alternative location? We're obviously with these look, with an application like this, it's just. Um processing what's submitted to us, so um. Obviously, I'd be glad to talk about alternatives if there were the locations of any other public industry, so I'm open to that, but not in this situation. Obviously, you have folks. This application.
So there's no way of changing the D O T's mind, you know. But then the things, you know, they want to go to the left, like I said, I'm not saying that.
I don't want to say that it's it's none, that it's, I think, you know, they invested a lot of money and. Found that happy. Twenty thousand.
I mean, I guess one of the things that's going back on what um. She's saying, and maybe. When you think about sixty four now, that traffic is bad.
Yeah.
And it 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 doesn't matter whether it's a saddle plow. Saddle plow. Um it's bad regardless, and and you're really chancing coming out, especially if you're going to the left. Um. When you're when you're doing that, and that, and you know, that would be a main concern for me, is just looking at the safety for everybody. Uh when it comes down to it. So, you know, I I don't know, um um, you know, anything's possible, they may decide to stick a spotlight.
And and to add what Ms. Boone.
I think.
Add what Ms. Boone says, you know, the economic level in our community has picked up in the last year and a half, two years. Anybody that tries to get go out on two, oh, it's just, it's a song. And uh I started doing some little bit of part time stuff, where I travel around a lot delivering stuff. And uh got a little bit, you know, car, and when I have to go in each direction. And there are times I have to come out and turn left against traffic, and I feel like I'm mad mad. I ain't kidding, because there's some of those times you can get, you know, traffic's. Uable, one way, and explain them another way, you pretty much gotta pull out there and meet and close your eyes and hope to bait them. And I mean, and that and that's getting worse more and more, that's the reason I asked that question, because it's really bad from say uh. Down there, all the way down to Walmart, really bad. Um and it's it's getting that way at the other end, west, and that's the reason I asked that question. And to segue into that, is there, until the super street gets filled? Would there not, would there be any ways there, like if they come out, if if you go, come out of the driveway, turn right, is there somewhere that they could make a loop or turn or something, somewhere or another? To not get into that, because when you come out of there, they have to turn, they turn right, they're gonna be going up here, but it's gonna be a slow go with concrete truck, seventy six thousand pounds. But they have to go across the median, that's gonna be a slow go, wait, now, have collision unless there's another truck or some friction. Those three next to us are probably weak. That that was a concern, so. Thanks.
Of course, again. You have been. I think one thought that you got is, you buy it only out, probably. The boy that left out of this driveway, when I put this road, just the, we're having Walgreens around, you can't make a left out of Walmart. Uh but. Again, I don't know what the turnaround means. But maybe it doesn't turn right, I don't know where to turn around. I guess some of them might start on. Lean, and and if they're negative, you won't want that, but if they want to get the next left, I'm just trying to play the next leg that comes to mind. All of them.
Some parts.
But and you know, I don't know just depending on how to play the D O T stop, because they won't watch that white turn, I don't know. They do it, Walgreens, but I'm sure they're gonna pop right there, but. Why turn out? Walmart shop. It would be a lot accident.
But their but their plan was not to go all the way down to Walmart.
Initially, we got this project at Walmart. Now it's all the way to Walmart.
First of all, we said that there were more accidents, that's the great, we decided to be elementary, and now we want, and we were like, what? So and remember, initially, they said they weren't gonna put the median, but so far, and it wasn't gonna go down to Walmart, because there were as many accidents there. And I lived over that way, and we were all like, I don't understand this, so now they've changed that plan to.
Yeah, I think sometimes when there was, several years ago. You know, it went to the Pentecostal church, a turnaround, and then all the way to Walmart.
But that wasn't the initial plan, was it?
Probably not initially.
No, it wasn't, they were gonna stop at a certain point and not go to Walmart, and they know they're. But we know most accidents have occurred in the area that they didn't initially want to circle.
I want to ask, I got some more questions here in the balance of touch. Jason, about hours of operation. Uh I know, I don't know a lot about concrete business, I do know a little bit, and uh in the summertime, and it's ninety plus degree. Uh concrete sets up, ass. I suppose it got this water based product and water evaporates and it sets up. I do know other concrete company, when it's like that, you got you got a lot of projects you gotta do. A lot of commit at three or four o'clock in the morning and start the process, so they can get on the job site before the temperature gets up. So not only does the concrete not dry out, where they get it, but the people working it can work the concrete. So not only does the concrete not dry out before they get it, but the people working it can work the concrete. Uh, is that an issue? Is that something that's doable? Now, it's only in the summertime when it's hot. Wintertime, you don't have that problem. You put a little bit of air freeze or something in there and keep it freezing. Um, has that been discussed? I don't know, that's what I'm asking. I, I know it said something.
I think, I think it was discussed, and that's normally what I do department. I want to find out what I want to. So I asked that question and this is information that people's, if you're going to the north, you go about it. They're here like, that'd be good. I think it's a question.
I have a question. How many other neighborhoods we have that have a. Heavy industrial in the middle neighborhood or even a light industrial in the middle of the neighborhood?
When we're all talking about in different. Research that.
Is it common? Or is it not common?
It's, it's less common, obviously, but, um, I'd say if you're around Oakwood, Greenland, or relevant. In certain parts of sixty-four, you're seeing industrial economy. Beyond that, this was on pretty particular land. But I can do a better analysis for you. Back there in Michigan.
No, I just like to know if we're being consistent with other neighborhoods.
Speaking about Oakwood twenty-one, what is happening with the plant there? The, uh. Dan Coats, what's going on with that? Didn't it get sold?
That Romeo. I'm not aware of that.
That was the one south of the country. Cause that wasn't, that stopped the plant. And then although, that was the one on pretty good road up there. But anyways, that Lawson Road, just going around the Dalton.
I'm pretty sure you just sold that out.
I had heard about the world of Boston, I had heard of.
For the reason. Can you find out if that's going on on my work?
The provider's a researcher.
I just like to see if we're treating our citizens, you know, formally and people please, uh, just like to know what's other neighborhoods calling.
And, and to expand on what Mr. Boone said, please. It's, why are we going all the heavy industrial, we're going to line and not stop with that? Light mixed light industrial use. So light industrial is where it's starting from.
Yeah. And this proposal uses a product on, in light of the cause of its exterior issue. It has an issue, it has a severe parts of the product of this product. In other words, everything's not located inside of it. It was a light industrial use and they were making gadgets or whatever else inside the building. It's a bit permitted use in this, but that's comfortable, it's already zone lined up. The fact that it's made products outside of the building, it requires heavy industrial or traditional burning.
How tall are the mixing tower? Would be comparable to the one that's, don't, don't get, down here channeling. Is that, is that what it's going to look like?
Very similar.
Okay. That's the, we say a mixing tower, that's what we call it.
Can't with hungry human whole.
Yeah.
So, um, Jack, we, when we rezoned the, the campsite, that border Wall Street, that was a heavy industrial, correct? And, and that, and that does border, um, resident, that does border our ten.
Right.
AR. AR. And it has, and it does have, yeah, simple family homes.
Oh. And I think normal minded asks this question, I know it's on the map, that the plant to the east side of the property. Would it not fit on the west side? Then it would, it'd be farther away from the residential property. That, was that an option or is that a?
Yeah. Um. I don't think so, uh, in my mind. I think one thing that puts the possibility to the east is that water line that runs through the site. I think that's part of the line. I think maybe the grade issue, that called off down border railroad, that's where the shore and storm were playing well. We're not a part of the compensation of Mayor there. But I think that would be another good question for the app. Why did they decide they were, I know the name of it, but they did let it make it there. These are often those things. Um, and I don't know the, the full terrain of the other part of the, I do know they're like a side of the sand. And for plant. And then, and then. But there is a pretty good setback on the properties on the north side of the plant, but on the east side, I think is what we're calling out today. It's a little bit close.
And I think that, that's really what concerns that I have is even though there's, there's going to be that buffer, all of that, still have noise. Um, and. Even at six o'clock, you know, some, some people feel indeed. But, you know, just thinking about that and, um, just what, what is it? You know, what, what's gonna be involved? Jay mentioned the, the dust and all of that, you know, what? You know, what, what's going to happen as far as, uh, just a spin that comes down to. For the property owners, whose houses are there. Even though you may have true, they may have the, you know, that's right. So I guess, you know, what would you just have? Some concerns that I have as far as the rest.
We have, we've got a couple more speakers and I think that they've, um, some of the owners, all, some of these questions might be better answered by them. By Jack, or there more questions for Jack before?
I was about to finish.
Oh, yeah. I'm almost done.
I'm almost done. Sure. And I give you some guidance at the risk of too. With others. I talked about the condition. The student said one of the plant were approved and at the time, and in new set of conditions, you know, I have a few things to agree to. I would recommend if you wanted to. All right. Next is, uh, on pages eighty-seven and eighty-eight. I'm drawing attention to the ordinances that you would be considering, uh, if you want to move forward for the application. Page eighty-seven is the ordinance that the planning board recommended approval by vote of six one. Okay. It's pretty much either, uh, the decision that they approved the rezoning and stated that it was specifically Landville. Okay. I'm gonna be sure that that was the planning board's recommendation. That has been considered, um, because I think, you know, there's something to think about. The Landville then recommended make use, it does not recommend construction. And so if you wanted to go that route for the approval of this project, I think you probably should take a look at page eighty-eight. If it would be to approve and that the Landville plan is in. That would be a consideration if you're going in that direction. All right. So page eighty-eight has two sections to consider that minute. And then lastly, I want to put the application. On page ninety-one, we provided a four-four sheet with a third of what we had to expect. And it rejects.
So Jack, are you saying that page ninety matches up with eighty-eight and page ninety-nine matches up with eighty-seven?
Exactly. Everybody did that eighty-seven, the amendment, uh, and, and the amendment page eighty-nine is the worksheet goes with it. Eighty-eight is the main page that page ninety worksheet goes with it. Mayor, I think that's it. I covered the condition. Uh, thank you. Wanted to go that route and we're going to approve this application. And we're meeting the plan that actually in the whole land and planning boards voted six one to approve this. Approved and it was, and it was inconsistent. We need, uh, for signing the, uh, kitchen, we need that happen at this meeting or do we need confirmation from having forgotten that part down the way? Uh, they're here to sign what they need.
He means that this, uh, when this will get revised. I thought that was, that is obviously.
That horrible group of horns. Time to get the sign back. We get that part.
Right. Thank you.
Just for clarification, planning board found it was consistent, but staff is recommending that it's inconsistent with that penalty thing. So you recommend an eighty-eight and a ninety?
I'll go back, I'll go back to this, this part. If I'm looking at the Landville plan, I'll basically, uh, Landville plan is that it makes you. I believe if we're zoning it, it can go. But that, the good staff recommendation would be that the, the land you're planning to change at the same time. That's, I think that's how, where I read the statute and what, where a land management should do, take this direction. But maybe something that makes you section that I'm missing. That says that what they're doing is an objective and a strategy of make use, um, section. Going to industrial zone typically would be industrial language classification. That answer your question, Commissioner.
Yes, thank you. Yeah.
Well, we'll move on to our next speaker. Andrew D. Stane Alden. Give your name and address, please.
Andrew Stane Alden, Oakwood three, five, with, uh. He happens here at his concrete. The name, uh, because you know any? I want to give you some information about who we are, what we do. We're based out of Sanford, North Carolina. Um, we have additional location done. And so concrete is the most widely used construction material in the world. Uh, followed by lumber and steel. The big difference is concrete is perishable, so it has to be switched locally. Um, and with the common exponential growth, like possibly coming here, likely coming here. Uh, it'll be hard for one plant, the current plant to keep up. Our neighbors, we need Pittsburgh, have three brand new ones, uh, per city comparison. I know one of those plants in Pittsburgh is very close to residential without any, um, natural barriers. Barrier of our current plants in Sanford and Dunn are also very close to residential. We haven't had any voice complaints from neighbors or city government. Also, your concerns about dust, especially our plant will be brand new, so the more modern plants are much more efficient in reducing dust. So there is a conveyor belt in the silo drops the material to the truck. And a large rubber boot hangs from the silo, surrounds the truck so that greatly reduces, um, dust. And as well as natural barriers. So, um, as I was saying, it's a perishable load is, um, to, came coming from Greensboro, especially on these, on these larger jobs. Uh, the mayor spoke earlier about hours of operation, about how it is common in the concrete industries where the plant opens at three in the morning. Those are typically for the large companies that are doing jobs like an Amazon warehouse. Um, so we are a small company, we only have seventeen trucks. Those companies have hundreds of thousands of trucks and we don't have the ability to do FedEx warehouse or, um. So that's why we focus on residential construction, um, and residential would be a lot of that's coming this way. So, so much smaller jobs, it's driveways and house labs. So there's, uh, county music coming in the morning, that's why our hours of operations are posted later. Oh. One other thing is, uh, small company we hire from within, this will be a few, few jobs that are living wages for drivers. They start at twenty-three hours, um, they have, um, employees and management now who have been promoted. Drivers with pens and starting at twenty-three, most are being paid much more than that. That's just the entry level employee. And I'm clear with answer.
One question. And I think this last earlier, you're probably perking. Were there any other sites, uh, that were in consideration for locating the plant?
Uh, so there's very little heavy industrial land compelling city and, uh, none as myself.
Hold it one more time. Hey, what, there is another site.
Oh.
But it's, uh, behind Roland Thomas building. The what? Roland Thomas building downtown? Roland Thomas?
That's the warehouse next to the.
The warehouse.
They're, you know, they don't know that. And that was Roland Thomas before they're done. That's that warehouse in front next to, uh, it's punished wherever it happened, was across the street, all of them.
This is the third site. The practice. My third. Site four.
Mayor, could you put his name and, and address for the public hearing authority?
Yeah, it might be like, you know, that, I did.
And St. St. Alden, that's when it gets time for it. And, um, after looking at the different sites, sixty-four site with the new improved road at the DOT, I know you don't agree with it. But it actually is safer for big trucks. Allows us to get onto the road and, and allows us to turn around in a sa- much safer area. Uh, we are currently very familiar with driving in heavy traffic because we do a lot of work theory and Apex. And our two current locations do have a heavy traffic levels. So our drivers are very familiar with coming in and out of traffic. And we think that's very good. Accident rates. We want to keep that.
Mainly.
Well, so it's gonna be six, uh, about six employees, correct? Uh, six to seven employees. What's the average, um, median wage? Median wage, we start a driver at twenty-three dollars an hour. Uh, and then our senior driver, the fucking thirty. That does not need to be cleared up. Which we prefer to give our drivers every time they're hired. So you're, you're thinking five drivers and a salesperson? Yes, sir.
I would just like to add, uh, we offer a guaranteed forty because when it rains or snows, we're essentially not open. Can't pour concrete in those conditions. So in the winter, sometimes it's too cold, it's snowy, it's icy, we don't open, but our drivers are still paid for forty hours.
What's your approximate, uh, investment you have for it?
Investment in the plant?
Yeah, we'll build out.
Uh, it would. Well, with steel prices fluctuating, uh, it's probably somewhere around the seven hundred, eight hundred thousand dollar range. And the trucks, it would probably be close to a three billion dollar investment.
What you found, why? Say we did, would we expect to see dirt move?
Uh, we would probably want to get dirt even as soon as possible, um, sort of feel for how quick dollars it begins to grow. We're here now, probably not know what's done, but, uh. With the residential circle, uh, maybe start breaking ground, we'll need to be ready, but. Maybe a year if you're not.
We'll try, we'll try to orient with the plant.
I thought she might have been, yeah, probably would.
Might just determine. Three towns or plant.
Pretty good. Over the bar to the year.
Well, no, a truck is a whole different topic. I have four trucks right now. And they're telling me I won't be open next year. I ordered them.
More, more question? Okay.
Okay. I'm sorry. Um, you mentioned that you had a plant that was in a residential area.
Um, it's nearby residential area in, uh, both Sanford and, and then Dunn.
So when you say nearby, would you?
Um, a bunch, across the street from Sanford and then Dunn, it's one, one block over. Get that stagnant. Um. So I know a lot of urban centers. So I know a lot of urban centers do have concrete plants, um, pretty close to residentially. They really aren't very loud, um. So for example, our office is probably fifty yards away from the plant. When I'm in there, I can't hear the trucks loaded.
Plant Sanford, you don't beat your.
It's going deeper already, it's been probably.
You have a question?
What do you get hours of operations?
Uh, fluctuates, I would say average six, four.
You'll have room, issue briefly, that all. Thank you. Mr. Michael Vincent, can you come up and give your name and address, please, sir?
Michael Vincent, sixty, the best lane, Title Six. And I'm here with the concrete plant, we did the plans on. So you got this every plant specific question. Like, I think somebody asked why we had it more to the east instead of the west. And we got a water main, we grew it early, but it needs, so we can't have two of them and stuff like that. We're trying to stay off the water main, and on the west side of the low corner of the property, that's where the ponds went to. The detention pond is coming water from, but that's why I said I want to the east, colored water line.
Yeah, I'm not just looking at that, it's good, I know that's a lot newer.
One of the guy out there, the nights of the flat spot, we're getting a plant laid out, and we don't run down the west end of the railroad track. Which I'll be our detention pond, so.
Or the west could go, the less, less issues left in the east. Or I thought.
Right, and if it wasn't for the water line, the different water line, it would have a lot more arches at the back, right?
Questions, Mr. Vincent? All right, thank you very much. Right, that said, I'm going to ask our speakers. What is, they might want to just leave the public hearing open as you all consider this, you might think of another question you want to ask. That's probably a smart move, but I'm not sure that, yet. I don't feel a consensus yet, so, all right? Any more discussion?
I know we have some. And we are growing, we need to broaden. And, uh, Harry's right, we don't have people in concrete. We have some places that have, uh, a mixed use, um. I don't recall any where we kind of blocked right in between. Multi-family dwellings with the, uh, apartments on one side and single family dwellings on the other. I'm just trying to balance it, you know, so. You know, I know we're going to need the materials, we're going to need to operate here, right about that. I just want to show it's a different place.
That was my initial, when I first glanced at, that's the two thoughts that I had. The one, it just, it just didn't, didn't look like it did. And it's around there, but the other thing, um, too, was I want to say, yeah, we need concrete, but it, it, it just another place we could put it. It just wouldn't be any question much about it.
So I'm a little intrigued by. Fact, he's got some plants in Sanford, now. Curious about how folks, messages up there felt about it. You don't have the evidence for us. Only other evidence we have is one writer from fifty minutes.
When, when was the woman, and this sent out and, uh, where, for this? The letter was wrote second twenty-six. And. Time opposed the same day, he filed property and then most of the. At last, and we've not had, aside from this one inquiry, we've not had a single other inquiry about that.
Do we have any residents show that thing?
I'm just going, I'm not, I don't want to recommend something, another option could do. And since council sits, if we've got the public hearing open. If there's, if you want to find out some additional information, say some of the other sites or some of the, that we could do that. Over the meeting, I think we could do this, hold it open, come back, we have to designate a date.
I, I, I think I have a question for you, I could, yeah, maybe in a moment. You know, those other sites that you have, uh, what's that? Average decibel, does that run, um, the companies are close? What type of decibel do you want?
Um, it's any noise. I know we are in accordance with, um, so you've done, and the city of Sanford's regulations, um, I don't have an exact number for you.
What, what, what is there, just about level rate? Is it lower or higher, the same as?
I'd have to get back to you when I.
I think the performance of other plants, either near residential areas, kind of informs what's going to happen on this one. They're running consistently below whatever harm requires. I can't see the place operating a whole lot differently.
I know that the thought, you know, Jack's recommendation, you know, that whole thing about the consistent, inconsistent. I think whatever the board decided, the board knew, my feeling, they were talking about the government, it's inconsistent. And that more matches what we currently do, that's what, that's what planning.
Yeah, I just, you need to violate the statute, I think that's what. In terms of if you want to change the zone of the property, you're a man, that's drawn. That's not, it's not, that's still a public, uh, decision by the board, legislative decision, I should say. But that's, that's my, okay. Use your badge and, uh. Where we want to go? Your concerns. I, I think, I mean, I think we, I mean, in my mind, I've got enough. But it's.
I feel like we have a question.
Down the night, down the country. Which we had more answers to. To noise. I had a really great table and come back to it later.
You recess, beginning until whatever. So. That way the public hearing would remain open, uh. Reconvene, still be, be really left off, there are additional information. Well. I'll have a slow, it just doesn't feel like we're, we've got a real good sense, you know, I think we've got a lot of information.
But, but I also think we're, that if we're gonna, we're gonna recess, that what we need to do is, is I outlined, these are the three or four things that we want to know. So we're reading names.
Yeah, yeah, correct.
So we have a recent traffic study down on.
Four?
Yeah.
I don't think other than the super street, now the, the traffic.
Do we need to think about the traffic flow?
I think it's recommended five trucks, is that correct?
I know, but do we still need to see what the traffic flow is? I'm just asking.
Well, for five additional vehicles, uh, wouldn't they be a, was a part of that?
I'm just.
I, I don't want to see more strange. Or in traffic speeds.
No, we don't need that.
I might find kind of what none of the artists. It is not a large.
But, but if, for future references, what's the impact, do you make one step, plan this?
Before a, a useful apprentice, I would create thousand trips per day, or a hundred peak hour trips. Peak hour, like an A or B. And we would have more traffic. For example, uh, the. Running the states, that sort of P I would present, that's one, that's one, that would trigger a P I. I thought it was probably.
But that, the major side, just.
The, I think Bill had a point there, that what? We want to get more information, what specific areas we want to get, we want to get more information so our staff know what direction to go. What was one of them, yes, well, let me.
I was thinking about the, uh, performance of the. Other plants, I can't, can't see it being just similar from this, this one. I think that would have very good diets.
Just then, you have a, a, a dig or, or areas?
Mine was really, uh, dealing with the, the residential. I, I just have concern about the, you know. In, in a residential area and, and, you know, how it affects. The people who live there.
If we had some, uh, photographs, pictures, whatever, going to call us, some existing site that offered anything.
It's possible.
Let Google that.
I think they're more urgent for.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we're working out to the other gathering, that makes you, yeah. It's a team of them.
Right. Well, it was another. Pretty good area, but. Anything else? Okay, so, I think it would sense that we want to, what do you call it? Recent, recent reset, that's what I would, recess the public hearing. Staff is going to go out, we'll do areas, we'll get close and just photograph and we'll. We can, we can, we can convene the. On the seven. Yes, no. That, reasonable, that, take the need. All right, what do we need now, motion, go out there, have a need of motion, that's it.
Make a motion when recess public hearing, we can make it all number seven.
Motion in the second. All of the players say ah, all of the phones like time. That's what we're gonna do. Yeah. We have, uh, reason for pulling zero, seven, eight acres, light industry, light industrial, general commercial.
Thank you, Mayor.
Well, definitely.
I'll take note of the fact that we provide you notice in the fact that. Cleanhouse policy proposal is on approximately four thousand zero two acres lined up toward the general park. Second property located at two hundred and thirty-third street, located west of the railroad track, identified as parcel number one six oh seven. Second property is owned by a weird industry, is located within the theme of floodway and flooding zone. It's surrounded by tracks with an average of one point seven acre. Home message purchased between down staff, business owners and the property. Planning board initiated the proposed management set up in November twenty twenty-two, uh, planning board. Uh, the land development plan recommends conservation, recreation, and make use for the subject property. They have provided a list of, um, objectives and strategies for those two. And, um. I'll point out that the conservation and recreation area, the reason it's designated is that you follow the boundary for the flood zone. When we designated that area, we probably discussed that past one, I got the land development, I just want to reiterate, by that's where it is, just because that represents the flood plain bound. Um, the planning board recommended by unanimous vote, uh, to approve the ordinance, meaning the official zoning map, and that the action is consistent. With the document, manager, manager calls, and this is, uh, many years. Not necessarily this following the, uh, couple of time. All right. All right, um, quickly, the zoning map, uh, is on page ninety-five, it designates the property line of, and this is the form of bowling chair properties. And when it was industrial, he's been speaking for many years now, for pretty much about a city of, of a decade. Uh, the land development plan recommends, what I said earlier, quite a bit of it's in the flood zone, some of it is in the, it's used area, and obviously, everything around the site is designated make use. Which is, uh, is supportive down town, it's developed into the commercial residential community. Uh, aerial shows the one it is, on page ninety-eight, we've got the flood map, we'll further refer, in ninety-nine, we had a, uh, survey, it's been done. Uh, about twenty years ago, it showed some details of the site, probably should. The, uh, property owner, one property owner notified in September as well of this, uh, request, providing some tax information, so forth. Uh, mayor. The planning board and staff recommend considering the amendments on page one five, and then the zoning board. And that it's consistent, and the work sheet is on page one six.
We might have something wrong, this is the piece of property where they're, don't have the. And it's not, and that's really, it's only one, just for that.
Open air market is not an industrial.
And we're changing it where they can do that, right?
It's supposed to be called starts?
Yeah.
It's the Roland Thomas, there's more mission there.
Were you young, or that Roland Thomas? Okay, but anyway, that's, that's the major emphasis. Of it, right? It allows that to happen, that, that's, I think, the, the, the event. All right, yeah, uh, nobody's standing up to speak. So, any questions, Jack? Okay. That's head to closing. Oh, so here. Move forward.
I'll make a motion, um, to a. I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance, pending the first of zoning map, the action is consistent, the adopted land development plan. Because the land development plan recommends conservation, recreation, and mixed use of the subject property. Posed and then reasonable because it improves, uh, very encourage the provision of recreation for land and residents, encourage preservation of sensitive environmental areas to develop.
No motion, and second, any further discussion? All those, the favorite six and five are saying ah, all those opposed like time, and most here. So this is the public hearing for. All right, old mission. Got it? Good. You've been. Yeah, Andrew's the fourth.
You have that.
Uh, two things, uh, you'll notice in your department reports, pound it, there was a heat field report from Paul providing the town office, uh, field report forty-three, field report forty-four. It's noted on page twelve, as, uh, English management requested, uh, I see, and we're, are including expected depletion banks, so. Field report forty-four, designated late December. So that's why we're saying now is, with that project.
We need to let you see them.
Yes, sir.
Have we had the Christmas party there?
I'm here on the original. Station there, before, I'm sorry. Have you heard that? Have the word said, thank you.
That's the word, seven, thank you.
My, oh, that one's nice.
Um, I was asking included for this being, uh, inbound. Here. They're down, um, free payment. On, I think we have a P S festival. Free to retain. Spray paint and just a simple time of, all the works have to remove those numbers. And by resorting to, uh, a lot of the more, I wanted to buy that, that cost breakdown, how that affected our, our staff, which, um. Public works superintendent, put this report together and said it was combined, maybe with a thousand seventy dollars in, in two minutes, I was estimation. But, um, I know some question raised about when that put place, about removing those numbers. Um, some, some were put down over a few days, the ones said Saturday before a few days, several more that the folks have removed, so. Isn't made in a, since it's awesome, or they, or if you're industry. Only if, if there's anything back on board.
This doesn't have anything to do with the people going around the neighborhood, it's a spray paint stuff on the, of extensive.
No, the.
Do we know anything about that? Because they're going through our neighborhood, spray painting, white stuff on the roads, I see people took. Something as spray painted over, it's like a gang thing out there.
It, it's spray painting over the black, that's somebody else's.
Right, but, but I'm saying that somebody is kind of going through our neighborhood, Jay, are they coming down your street doing that? Yeah, yeah, I see. But is it, is it gangs or is it just teenagers or we don't know?
I, I haven't, for that kind of.
And it's, well, they probably came to this. And it's the party kids, people doing stuff like that.
So, but most of the graffiti that you see in the town is localized, uh, very, uh, unorganized gang members. And the, the recent, the recent, uh, one on sixty four that's much bigger display, uh, I can't really give you the, the, as to who. Or what, what have been at that particular, uh, committee. But since I've been here, there have been a. Periods of time where graffiti has developed and covered. Uh, it's very, uh, difficult to catch them in the act, but I would say that, um. There's two types of graffiti, there's graffiti for, uh, big organized gangs and there's localized graffiti that have very loose. That, that's my current answer for them.
No, it's very difficult, I'm surprised that's, but I was wondering. Spread like that time, I'm sorry, I know it's only about how they, I'm just saying, so I'm. At the end of, uh, some more plan. I, I always just wondered, you know, prices and stuff, I just charted them.
Mr. Mayor, have we had any contact with the party that did the painting?
We, we did the time of question, uh, throughout the guest festival.
Have we had any contact, had any contact with them about their responsibility? And second part of that question is, in the, uh, in the, uh, package, the, the people that get when they do festivals, the. What does it say in there about that kind of thing? And is there any penalty described in that, uh, if something happened?
So, in a circumstance like this, um. Organizations that we want to have such, such a festival or made aware of options, including using paint. Or using some type of, of temporary material, um, that are options and those things that exist and can be used. Dog is a common option, um, something that can easily wash away, um, something that's a water-based solution. Uh, this, this took, uh, an industrial pressure washer with multiple trials.
This man that did, um, big rain around that town, been out there for weeks out of that yet. Followed on that, but. They portrayed it as a, somewhat of a miscommunication indicated that they, that they all set on the can washable. So.
And in, in the, in the package that they received, was there anything in there about a penalty if they did not prescribe to these departments?
Uh, and, and do you have a situation like this, causing damage to town property? Restitution to the source, in traditional conditions, they prove the like they.
Well, yeah, just build out and say, I, I get it, you know, the lawyers are. You build that out. Yeah, I mean, if you gotta be told you're not supposed to be running lawnmowers today, you know, you know.
I, I'll say, go back and look, they, uh, asked some original numbers in question. Tell the building, a lighter wood paint that was used, and it was overlaid with a white spray paint. So it appears, from, from my perspective, it appears that originally was put down with a water soluble spray. And then was, um, overlaid with a permanent white spray paint. Yes, because the white was much more busy.
Is that something we need to include in the future? Uh, I think, I think that's.
Is that what you need, this is a learning experience?
Yeah. The one thing I'd like to add into that is that, uh, before we do anything. That is, because I, I, I'm not advocating that you get away with it. But I do think we should have, or the town, or staff or somebody should have a conversation with the folks that did it. And that's establish, hey, look, didn't do this, and let's talk about how we're gonna do this. Because, uh, you know, they, they definitely caused us, uh. I wouldn't say hardship, but again, it was an expense that we weren't expecting. And, uh, they have some, some responsibility in it, and let's see what they're gonna do, and we can, we can address this. And they actively talk to us. Can we do that? Is that okay?
Well, I think we can use a learning experience and pour it. Fan liaisons, but in a major contributor to fail. Um, I'd like to think that we've got enough history when you get passive pickup.
Now, I think can, but I will make sure that, that they know this ain't it.
No, and I, I agree, I think that, that, that's conversation, the thing, having it after the fact, I, you know, and, and then, you know, giving, giving this. I don't think that's necessarily the right thing either, I think that, um, you know, we, I think we have to establish a, this, this is what it costs, we can't afford to do this again. So here's, here's, here's what we, we need to make sure we do in the future. Rather than saying, yeah, for all, exactly, for all of us, that's correct.
I still think we need to have a conversation with, because quite frankly, it wasn't the first time they ever had the best, it ain't the first time, every other time we talk. So, you know.
Right, and, and, and that's what it's sort of, they use.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, the wild, why that wasn't used this time, um, um, I think really, and why they do that, and also, it was not put down all at one time. I'll say around saving the numbers, but down over a few days. Or why at some point was those from the, from where I knew.
All right. What if you got?
Uh. For the, we'll know, I think we can, they look at the town. And then, starting, uh, or Ohio, for that piece, uh, well attended, um, gives a lot of great information about the state of housing and economy, county town. And a lot of policies about the, but also addressing a lot of the challenges that was front facing here at, um, it's gonna be educational for them. Um. And we, uh, same day last week, uh, in Randolph County. Uh, with many of our renowned partners, we've been found, we're, 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 we're trying to reach a council. Um, Franklin, the town of Franklinville, discussed, um, collaboration, working together towards. Totally component of our team's site, which we've completed. He was, was really productive, myself and, and Chris and Ford Fidel attended, or Tyler City. And Brian Thompson there, and I have a chat in town, and it's, so really often, you know, meet and greet, we didn't know each other, and at that meeting, we sat and met in person. And it really, really good groundbreaking, I think, to, uh, work together, uh, very, very positive productivity. I believe we'll be probably months from, from here on out, uh, facilitated by their, their public organization. If there's any specific questions on that, I'd be happy to answer those. Um, I appreciate, uh, Commissioner Brown points out, uh, while we've got started, that we have, uh, wastewater treatment plant, um, it's effective November the first. To get our upgrade to six, ten gallons per day. And we'll finally be able to kick off that eventually, so we got a lot of positive signs for the program that we're working on. Um, we're also continuing to work on our personnel policy, interior policy, updates and revisions, which should be more than just, again, there'll be a, a new personnel policy, so. It's, it's my hope that we will have that staff level. Please, having been reviewed all my important years before our next meeting, I did a lengthy document. It's probably around a hundred pages, so, uh, Mr. Thackwell, I'm gonna review it, I'd like to invite him to have it for our next meeting. All we need after that, um, I'll often, um, they discuss it, their emotion. We're also working on, uh, destination for the, our pool contract for next year, for, for twenty three. Uh, we have a public group receiving, have a substantial increase, we've done a fifteen thousand dollar increase on our pool contract. So, we're at that, um, as any town was growing, we're really at that break even point where we really may want to consider, uh, making a, a switch to a full-time person. Um, in that department, so that's something we're reviewing now, see if that's, of course, cost-effective option. When we make that determination, we'll make a recommendation to, or if it's leaning in that direction, that we likely will come out, um, at better position.
Can I say something about that, just that, was a hundred years ago, when I was growing up, they allowed teachers. And some of the students, the lifeguards, the teacher, run the pool. You remember that room, you remember that hundred years ago? You remember, um, Butler, oh, this is mine?
Yeah.
And he run the pool, so that might be something to think about, the teachers are always looking for something during the summer, run the pool. We've got kids that wanna be lifeguards, that we could hire, I don't know if that would be more feasible, uh, as far as. Bottom line, insurance wise, whatever.
So, on this line, there's a, there would be, like a recreation person, supervisor, then it, there would be having a full-time employee. That will be new functions for us beyond just the season of, of the pool, assisted by part-time lifeguards. The, the one hiccup is we would have to have that person certified, uh, in the running pool, so that's, that is a process, but, um. Super extensive process, that is a process.
But Ling and Lewis has an honor that's certified, actually.
Well, no, it's a different certification, so, now to, um, being a quarries director of a pool. You have to have certain certifications, um, national certifications, and there's chemistry involved, there's mechanics involved. There's several tests that you have to take in pass in order to be certified to run all the equipment. Um, so, uh, the quarries director provide, has a lot of certs, and they're not easy yet. And then, once you have someone that has some certs, then you have to have lifeguards who have to have more than CPR. So, for example, uh, J M, all their coaches, they, they provide CPR training. But in addition to that, you have to have the Red Cross lifeguard training to be the lifeguard. That, that class, I think. Costs.
One hundred dollars, one hundred and fifteen, it's, is it, it's up to about two fifty. Is it really, because it used to be about a hundred and fifty, a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty.
So, and the, the folks who are current managers, they offer that class. Which would be a little awkward to take, with people that are enjoying it, or you can take that class if the Y they do offer, the Y, but you have to be approved through Red Cross. So, we can get students to do it, um, and we can piggyback on, I think, J M students and teachers who, who have a CPR certification. Will take the next step and get a lifeguard, but getting the person who has the certification to operate is very difficult.
If you're on the full-time person, they could do that and do it.
That, that's good, that would be good, is, it would allow us to not have to hire another full-time recreation person that may be requested in the near future, like in the next budget. I don't like to kill two birds with one stone.
Right, right.
Have a full manager also is that other full-time person, and, and hopefully at no additional cost, or, or minimal cost. But, but Commissioner Payless is correct, people do that full-time person would have to carry those licenses, certification. Or some lifeguards that have been operated under that license, that kind of technical flooring levels, and certain pool, they're, they're part of. But, but thinking with the.
I'm in your school.
I was thinking. Being, um, full manager and special head site position, sit around a little bit of automation. But it's on your mission to be a firm.
Yeah, we're considering these expenses that may cost. Consider our organization, how is their role? Well, it's a long question. They all run up.
All right, so you're gonna research that some more, right? Because we're getting long in the tooth. Go off to the data section.
Last, last one.
We're currently working with Sanford Paul Pausser and Free Pickles. Sanford Paul Pausser's reminder to organize through our, uh, development action plan. Um, we're working with him along with Free Pickles, Free Pickles is doing our, uh, utility C I P and rate series, one of the things. Twenty five series, we're working on blending those totals together, when we're looking at long-term economic development solutions. And that's a major issue like utilities, that's blended with capital improvement plan and utility components, so that. Um, when we're not, we're talking about the future, we're multiplying playing with, that's the thing. Uh, we, we currently don't have a final price, uh, I'm expecting somewhere in the, uh, hundred and eight thousand dollar range. That concludes our report, Mayor.
All right, that's the business. Department of four three, the fact is nothing to add to that, right? And attorney. Yes.
No, you, you, you just have aspirations, you have hours about.
I think you will come up with that, you know, okay, we'll take that under your mind.
I'll just throw you.
Yeah, we'll do it today.
Hey, I'm, 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 I got, I got one real good. So, yeah, I, I attended the foreign trade zone ninety three Board of Terrorist Rates Reviews Committee, the, um, board meeting, uh, last. And so we, um, foreign trade zone ninety three was, is operated by the Triangle J Council of Governments. And, um, it encompasses roughly eight, eight or nine counties and stretches up into Virginia. But, um, the foreign trade zone, we actually have one operator here in Southwest City, which is, um, M A S Acne. And then there are a number of other, um, operators throughout the Triangle area, down, uh, to Wilson, and then, um. And, and north of here, and one, so, um. We're, I represent, um, you know, Triangle J Board of Delegates on that committee, but, um, so we're, we're now. At the point where someone's gonna be giving some additional representation, because I, I actually was, um, elected as a chair of that board. So, we will, we will now have a little bit more voice on the foreign trade zone.
Yeah, I just wanted, um, go back to the festival, just, when you have time, with a rush. Can you reword that, and let our attorneys, bro, look at it?
I just wanna clarify, the, the language is about having to. Fight.
With, not to use anything, I don't know, I don't have a say.
We used to a little clip in each.
Attorney, we don't really do that. I mean, there's no rush, I just wanna do it for, you know. I don't know, don't put anything permanent on the brush. You're black working for.
Just saying, I, I see. You're taking that statute, there's a statute on injury to real property.
Okay. Yeah, comments, the board.